7 o'clock, we will call the regular county council meeting to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jennings.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Neville is excused. Oberstadt.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Slawinski.
Here.
Niebone.
Here.
Dugan.
Here.
Akome.
Yep.
Phillips.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
Ten present, one excused.
Thank you. Alderperson Oberstadt, are you able to come to your seat?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you. All right, if you would join me in standing and, uh, our salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm just gonna keep the comments relatively short tonight. We have a lengthy agenda, but we're coming off of a pretty particular weekend, near and dear to my heart, trivia weekend, of course, and my very dear friend Jim Oliver announced that he's going to be retiring in a few years, working with someone to keep the contest going, and it got into a little discussion with him about, you know, what that is, and we talked about his memories over the years and why he does it, and there were a lot of "thank you, Jims" that were handed out this weekend. "Thank you, Jim." "Thank you." Jim said, "No, it's not about me. Thank you for the experience." And that actually has a little bit more meaning, especially for a room full of electeds, because that's really what it boils down to is service. Jim was, is passionate about the radio station and about the contest, and he chose to do this because of that passion. I think a lot of people in the room here feel the same way. You chose to step up in service of the citizens of Stevens Point. You do it for them. They don't do it for us. And that kinda struck a chord with me, especially tonight with the new election season, um, just as a reminder of why we do things, and the pleasure that we get out of it is really derived from helping others, to be in the service of others, and I think it's important that we just kinda keep that in the back of our mind in everything we do, in our elected jobs. If you are community volunteers, we had National Community Service Recognition Day this past week, and the countless thousands and thousands of hours of people that are just stepping up in service of their community, and it's really important to recognize that. So, thank you, all of you, and a special thank you to my good friend Jim. With that, we will move on to item number three. Persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item must register their request at this time, other than a public hearing, of course. Those who wish to address the county council during a public hearing are not required to identify themselves until the public hearing is declared open by the mayor. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on any of our agenda items that has not filled out one of these slips? Kelly, are you still here?
Yeah.
Kelly, could you get Kara, please? And with that, we will move on to persons who wish to address the county council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question.
Sorry, I didn't see the glasses.
Oh, and I was picking up baby blanket, that's probably why. My understanding is a Mr. Segura, I don't know how to say his name, Dr. Segura, sent an email this afternoon, is that appropriate to add into the comments?
Uh, you certainly can, but I just saw his wife Kara.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I don't know if she's speaking on his behalf or not.
I'll make that assumption.
I apologize, I haven't seen the emails because...
I just was made aware of it, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So, moving on again, item number four, is persons who wish to address the mayor and council for up to three minutes regarding a non-agenda item, and we have Jessica here. Jessica, could you step to the lectern up there and let us know a little bit about what you came to talk to us about?
Okay. Thank you for the invitation, Mayor. So, my name's Jessica, I actually work at the Family Crisis Center here in Stevens Point, and April is recognized as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and so the mayor and the county executive wrote proclamations and also got on board with supporting those efforts to really bring awareness, to honor victims and survivors, and to really want to move things towards prevention, because we, you know, likely, we love to serve, speaking of service, this is what we do day in and day out. We serve folks who are at their worst traumatic moments, but we would love to be out of jobs, right? So, we wanna really focus a lot of efforts on prevention as well, and that's what we do day in and day out. We work with people with whatever needs might come up, but also working towards creating more awareness and efforts towards preventing these things from happening. So, we have a couple events this month. There's a Human Trafficking Awareness Event, it's a public, open to the community, at Ben Franklin, it's on April 25th, at 7:00 PM is when the presentation will begin, and it will be talking about a lot of myths or facts around what human trafficking looks like and what we can do to recognize it. So, come join us, it's free, and we also, going on today, tomorrow, and Wednesday at the university, is an art installation of clothing that actual people were wearing when they were assaulted. We put together art pieces, they're not the actual clothing, that would be as evidence, things like that, but it's a wonderful display that can be quite emotional and just very interesting way to look at dispelling the social norms that what people are wearing is a cause of sexual violence. So, we had 70 people show up today for four hours, and we hope to see more people there throughout the week. So, that's tomorrow, 10 to 2, and 5 to 7 in the evening, and then on Wednesday, 10 to 2 as well. So, that's all.
Jessica, if someone wanted to learn more information about what you do or any of the services that CAP provides, where could they go?
You can go to capservices.org, stop down at the Family Crisis Center, we're always there 24 hours a day, and our phone number is answered 24/7 at 715-343-7125.
Jessica, thank you very much, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you all for what you do.
The speaker's list is exhausted. Item number five is a presentation by Todd Kukon, our Portage County Business Council's Executive Director. He's gonna give us an annual report or at least an update. Todd?
Absolutely, thank you. Gotta drop off a few things here and there.
Skukon, I can't have you talking until you're in front of a microphone. We need that for radio and TV.
(laughing).
Man down, man down.
Wow, welcome to Tom's last meeting, and I had this thing here that said I wanna congratulate Mary and Heidi and Tom on their service, but just Mary and Heidi for right now, we'll get to Tom later, but thanks, thanks much for having me and giving me the 45 minutes that you said they could have, Mayor. I also wanna congratulate the community on a great trivia contest, you know, 10,000 people from around the world who are somehow connected to Stevens Point, which is important for what we do and important for what the business council does too. As a matter of fact, we took a number of ads through a variety of sources for trivia, and we're trying to assess in the future if that's a strategy we wanna use to promote our website, which I'll, which I'll talk about in a minute, so glad to see that those people that were involved survived the weekend, so thanks much. Michael, are you the button pusher clicker?
Yes.
So, that's me, and that's us, so you can go to the next slide. So, essentially, what we do at the business council, just for those of you that maybe aren't as familiar, we are mostly concerned with retention and attraction of businesses and employees, okay? So, that's as basic as we can get, that's actually our mission statement up there, that's what we focus on. That changes from year to year and from decade to decade depending upon the needs of the community. Next one, please. So, the first thing I wanna talk about that I just mentioned is our new website, everythingpointshere.com. It's actually been out in the public since the fall. We're gonna be starting now to do, have a more concerted effort to get that out in the community. It's a talent attraction website. As you can see across the top, depending upon where you're sitting, you can see jobs, fun, housing, education, quality of life, and bragging rights. Those are the six tabs, and we've already had a number of businesses that are including this website in their job postings. I know UW-Stevens Point is doing it, and a number of others, so that there's one location where people can go to, click on, and easily drill down information, so you can go to education, you can go to post-secondary education, there's mid-state, UWSP, Rasmussen on there, you can click on UWSP, it takes you to their website, you can find out everything you want to know. So, we don't have to, we're not duplicating efforts, we're trying to help people get to things they need to know about the community as quickly as they can, and there's a number of other things on there, but I would, I would offer to you to please utilize this website, post it on your social media, get it to people. If you're a business owner, work at a business, get it on your sites, and let's get the word out there. We also have a companion piece in the upper right-hand corner, a hardcover magazine that works with that as well, so businesses can mail that out, you can put it in waiting rooms, however you choose to use that, but it's, it's our talent attraction piece, and it's gaining a lot more attention. Another element of what we do, and really tonight, I'm just focusing on those things that are related to the business community. There's a lot of stuff, well, everything we do is related to the business community, but specifically economic development in the business community. There's a lot more we do, but another piece that we work on, it's called Inspire Central Wisconsin. It's actually nearly statewide right now, but it's an opportunity for high school students, mid-state technical college students, and those who are using the job centers to do research on businesses who are on this website. So, if you've heard of Career Cruising, that's the high school version, where students can go in, put in their academic and career plans, it's a DPI mandate, talks about all they do in high school, they can also research businesses through the portal into Inspire Central Wisconsin. A business, including the city, or any other business in this community, can put their profile on this website, up to six promotional videos, they can talk about the types of jobs that they have, they can talk about the jobs that are open, and the students can actually connect with somebody in that business designated by the business to communicate about that job. So, a high school senior may ask, "Well, what type of courses will I have to take to get this job?" A sixth grader might say, "How much money can I make?" So, if it runs a gamut of, I asked that same question, but it runs, it runs a gamut. If any businesses are interested in that, they should contact the business council. It's free and easy to get, to get signed up and hooked up to that, and the schools are doing a great job, and that continues to grow as well in terms of their promoting it, so, and now it's gonna be, it's gonna soon be the point where somebody we're seeing can research businesses up here in Portage County and all throughout the state, so a great tool for us to have here. We also have some opportunities for, particularly in the manufacturing arena. The state of Wisconsin has a supply chain marketplace, which is kinda the right-hand screenshot there. It was something developed out of the Fox Valley, the Highway 41 corridor, but businesses can go on here, and they can find local businesses, or they can promote themselves as a local business, so that as businesses look for ways to, for vendors or for ways to market their business, we hope that they look locally. It'd be great if you looked across the street, or maybe across the highway, or across the county, or at least somewhere within the state, to partner up with businesses in terms of selling their product or buying from others to help build their product. In the lower right-hand corner is, is actually a nationwide manufacturing site with the same sort of process. We help manage those, we help promote those in the business community. Again, both of those are free opportunities that we provide as a service to the business community. Tools for Business Success is a link, it actually, it takes you off of our website, but it still has the same look as our website, but it's a tab on the front page of the portagecountybiz.com website, and has all sorts of information for business owners. So, maybe a business owner isn't comfortable calling us, or they're afraid of Michael, or don't know where to start, you know, to get engaged or learn more about the business community. It has local, regional, state, and national resources for them, from HR to finding grant money, a whole, a whole, any, any sort of question you might have in the business arena, you can, you can tab on this and find information, at least get yourselves started looking for different tools for business success. We also have a search properties location on our website, again, on portagecountybiz.com. You can go into this location, it's called Search Properties under Economic Development, and you can search properties. You can search for property itself and/or you can search for buildings that might be available and for sale. We maintain that website, again, we promote that website occasionally. As you can see, the East Park Commerce Center is one of those on here, and if you flip to the next page, it also goes into some detail, there's a couple pages of PDFs that talk about the East Park Commerce Center itself. So, again, a site developer may go on here and do some searching on his or her own before they actually contact the community. This is a way for them to research available properties and available buildings on properties as well. Okay, we, well, I'm sorry about the picture, but we also do, that's touched up quite a bit, we do, we do a lot of, stop laughing, we do a lot of regional, national, international advertising, promoting our community. A lot of what we're spending time on now is talking about the quality of life here, as well as the quality of locations that are available, such as the East Park Commerce Center to relocate to, to our community. So, we're continuing to do that, we're gonna be, we're kinda ratcheting back a little bit on, on that and building up our talent attraction efforts. We'd love to have a business move here, don't get me wrong, and I can feel the, the heat from the mayor behind me, but we're really focusing on the talent attraction, we'd love to have new businesses come here as well, but we're spending a little bit less in the advertising arena for that, and more on focusing on the talent attraction and talent retention. We just started, the end of March, we had our first lab for, as part of Portage County Prosperity. A few people in this room have been involved with that. You can see all the partners that, that are involved in this effort, and it's really a way to look at what are, what are the trends, and what are the trends for the future, looking out, I mean, 2040 is only 20 years away, isn't that weird to say? But looking out 20 years, and then coming back from that and figuring out what are those things we can do over the next six, nine, 12 months to continue to make our community a great place to live. Prosperity has a lot of different meaning for a lot of different people, but we're beginning to address it. We had a group of about 65, I think, at the last session, right now, we're targeted to have, I think we have 77 RSVPs for Thursday. There's gonna be more ways for the entire community to get together, it's just hard to get 70,000 people in one room in, in the, in the community. So, we think we've got a pretty diverse group, and the group changes a little bit from meeting to meeting, but it's a good effort coming out of the governmental arena, as you can see by the, the folks that are, that are organized there. The Local Government Institute of Wisconsin is really the, the brainchild behind this, and we've hired a third-party facilitator, so, you know, it's not a tainted approach because, you know, Tom Schrader's standing up in front and trying to sway the audience one way or another. All right, thanks, next one? And then this is a list of some of the other programs we do that help the business community. We have our Ignite Young Professionals Group, actually, YP Week is coming up in two weeks, or next, next week, yeah, next week, actually, wow, happening fast. Lot of events for young professionals in our community. We've hosted the Hatch Event here for two years, an entrepreneurs event. We have our leadership courses, LPC, the Harnell Leadership, and we're starting a high school leadership program. We work very closely with the schools, with Partners in Education, the Golden Apple Awards. We have a quarterly Women in Business Program, Business Exchange, Executive Roundtable, we have a Women Business Owner Roundtable, Job Fair, and many other things that you can find on our website that, events and, we do over 80, close to 100 programs and events throughout the course of the year, all different ways to help different, different-sized businesses and, and working in economic development as well. I think that's the end of that slide. Do I, do I take questions, or do I shut up and sit down, or can I do my little presentation, or?
Typically, we don't allow questions and answers, but you, you know most of the alders, if not all of them, and...
Yeah. Hi, Alders.
Certainly contact you where, Todd?
Um, well, I'm right here.
Oh, office.
Oh, I'm sorry, right up there, and it's actually in the packet I gave you, my, my email address, phone number. I'd love to sit, I sat down, you know, David was running, I know, we sat down and had a couple chats together, love to sit down with anybody and everybody to talk or ask questions, or grill me, or, you know, have a soda, whatever the case, after 5 o'clock, maybe something other than a soda, but...
Thank you, Todd, and you have a presentation, you said?
Yeah, I do. Um, Tom?
Director Schrader, would you please come to the lectern?
So, I mentioned, I mentioned...
Everybody else may wanna back up a little bit.
I mentioned, oh, it's safe, I got through the screening. I mentioned quality of life, and I don't, I think the one person that exemplifies quality of life in our community is Tom Schrader. I've only been blessed to be here for 15 years. Tom's been in the community for about 76, so he's, he's much more, no, maybe not, but we wanna, we wanna give you a small token of appreciation, it's from Bria Bell, of course, fitting for every man, so, Tom, there's a, a little thank you from the, go ahead and see what, it's safe, by the way, to open.
Might need this later.
Well, here, you can, you can use it for a fisher. And you can mix and match, too, if you want.
Oh, boy.
I think it's Tom's two favorite things to do.
Looks like some fishing socks and drinking socks.
Bobber and beer, what else, that's Tom, so, Tom?
One of each, huh? Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Tom, try not to get those socks mixed up.
Yeah.
Item number five is, I'm sorry, item number six, on page five, is our consent agenda. Are there any items that the alders wish to push-pull from the consent agenda? Alderperson Dugan?
Yes, I'd be happy to actually approve the consent agenda, but I would like to pull item number nine from the actions of the Plan Commission.
Item number nine from the actions of the Plan Commission.
And that is tourist rooming houses.
That's acceptable, Logan? Item number nine should be the ordinance amendment for tourists...
It's not...
Rubing houses.
We don't have the ordinance yet, do we?
No, there, there isn't anything yet, no.
Standby while we look at that. I don't think there's anything subject to approval, but if you wanted to add a comment regarding to that...
Just, just some comments, yeah.
You could certainly do that without pulling the item.
Yeah. I, I understand that in, in the future, we'll be probably looking at a resolution or an ordinance, but, um...
We will, but are you...
Not now.
You still intend to pull the item?
I am.
Okay, you, you don't wanna just make comments about it during the consent agenda?
I just wanna make comments, yes, that's it. If that's enough.
All right, that, that would be enough. So, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, is that correct, Alderperson?
That's correct.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Alderperson Oberstadt. Now, Alderperson Dugan, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Well, in, in Plan Commission, as, as the minutes read, staff was looking to expand...
Alder, can you tell if your microphone is on?
Pardon me?
It doesn't seem like your microphone is on, it is?
Green light.
Maybe someone in the sound booth can get the...
Green light, green light.
Volume up?
Yep. Shall I talk loudly?
I think we're getting there.
All right, okay.
Go ahead.
Um, the minutes say, staff was looking to expand on the types of districts that they, that tourist rooming houses could be allowed in, and, um, looking at R2 and R3 districts, those are single-family, double-family districts, as well as making sure that tourist rooming houses met the state's licensing requirements and that they paid room tax. Staff provided three options in how to do this, and I think Plan Commission recommended option two being to permit tourist rooming houses for owner-occupied dwellings, but as a conditional use for solely rental units with no owner living there. So, that's sort of the background for those people who don't know and are listening or I am especially concerned, as I was at that meeting, and I mentioned that, that tourist rooming houses have some regulation, and I checked the state licensing requirements, and it appears that an annual license for accommodations should be less than 30 days, that there is a licensing fee of $110, that there is a one-time pre-inspection fee of about $300, and that is especially important to me because that includes health and safety inspection by a state inspector called a sanitarian, especially interested in things like fire alarms, carbon monoxide detectors, ventilation, and more. Also, the state recognizes that a state sales tax is required, and that there is probably a municipal room tax, and we have that, and the state also recommends that people who have tourist rooming houses get insurance, because there's real liability there in case something should happen, they should be covered. So, those things all seem extremely important to me, and I'm happy that the Plan Commission recommended that we make sure these folks get state licensure, and those are the main things that the state will do. That means also that our community development department would not be responsible for inspecting. I mean, that, I know, could be a real burden if we have a lot of tourist rooming houses. The one thing that I would hope for the future, when we bring this up again, and when it comes up in the zoning rewrite, is that the city, the state says the city can do this, it's not required by state law, but the city might require a limited number of tourist rooming houses in a particular neighborhood, and I'm really in favor of that. You wouldn't, I would hope not to get them, you know, a lot concentrated in one area, because people are coming, going, coming and going, there's a kind of revolving door thing, and that would certainly work against my understanding of an established neighborhood, an established residential neighborhood where you wanna get, you know, you wanna learn who your neighbors are, you wanna have perhaps picnics with them, but having, you know, kind of a motel, not, a lot of them around the neighborhood would not be beneficial in my view. And also, I'm wondering if the city might consider, and the state suggested this too, that there might be a building code and a property maintenance compliance issue too. I'm, I'm thinking it would be good if the state comes in and, and probably if there was a real property maintenance problem or a building, structural problem, I would think the state would pick up on that, but in any case, perhaps the city should do that as well, just as we do with voluntary rental inspections. So, those are the things that I wanted to mention. I'm happy the state really takes care of this, and I'm happy the Plan Commission, and I hope the council will support that in the future, and I'm hoping that we will also consider the building code and property maintenance compliances. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I wanna just point out that any of the rooming houses that are allowed, the bed and breakfasts, the VRBOs, the Airbnbs, all of those things are currently inspected, all of them are in compliance with the state standards, as well as any municipal standards that we have. We have city inspectors, we have a fire marshal, we have property maintenance people, all of these things are still adhered to or inspected. All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, it has been seconded. Anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing none, all those, better get a roll call, please.
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Oberstadt.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Akome.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
Ten zero, that is adopted. Item number seven is on page 46 of your packet, and that is to consider the 2019-2020 Tantative Agreement between the City of Stevens Point and the Stevens Point Police Officers Organization. Lisa, do you have anything you want to add to this, or Logan?
(inaudible).
Okay, are there any comments or questions? Alder Morrow?
I move approval of the 2019-2020 Tantative Agreement with the Stevens Point Police Officers Association.
Thank you, seconded by Alderperson Niebone. Discussion there. Hearing none, Alder Phillips?
I guess I comment about one part of the contract, and that's the residency distance. I truly believe that the Stevens Point residents want a quicker emergency response time rather than more. Being protectors of the city, we not only want to be close by, but we also want them to be a part of our community, not an outsider. Allowing this change of 326 square miles to be added to the residency options, someone has to explain to me how a new policeman can become a part of a great community if they are allowed to live or reside in other cities, towns, villages, counties, and in different school districts. Some cities they can live in, Wisconsin Rapids, Port Hurvis, Nacusa, Wapaka, a whole bunch, Moscow, oh no, that's Mozeni, Arpin, Petunwell Village, and just two miles from Wittenburg. I think we're moving in the wrong direction. In the 90s, the police department at that time wanted everybody to know that their police officers are their friends, and they wanted them to live in the community and all this stuff. So, something has changed, we're going in the wrong direction. I, I would hope this contract could be turned down, and we could look at that, just that part of the residency distance from the City of Stevens Point.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Okay, Alderperson Dugan?
I just wanna say that I, I agree with Alder Phillips. I'm concerned too that so many of the police and fire people may not be a part of the community and really know the people around them. They may know the streets, they may know some of the buildings, but if a number of them live out and aren't in connection, you know, they're not going to church here, they're not, their kids aren't in school here, they're not in clubs and organizations here, they're missing out, I think, on what Stevens Point really is, so, that's it.
Thank you. Alder Jennings?
I also agree in principle, however, I think it's, I think it's incorrect to say that 300 miles was added, and basically, the state regulates this. We cannot... state regulates this. We cannot mandate that people live in Stevens Point, and I stated at Monday night that I wish everyone who worked for the city lived in the City of Stevens Point, but the city cannot mandate that. That's against the law.
Thank you. Alder Person Niebone.
Yeah, I would like to think that those folks would want to live in Stevens Point, but there's a lot to be said about getting away from a stressful workplace. Just because someone lives outside the city doesn't necessarily mean they won't be in a club or a community organization or be invested in the community. I think, I don't think it's an issue. I think with communications the way they are, police officers can respond pretty quickly, no matter where they are, and some of them in outlying areas may help support the Portage County Sheriff Department. So I don't see that necessarily as a bad thing.
Thank you very much. Alder McComb?
As Personnel Committee Chair, I sat in several meetings last summer in which staffing was discussed, and we're having a hard time filling positions, and I, I'm confident that this will help.
Thank you. Any other comments? I just want to make one comment in 16 different parts. No, I don't want this to infer that because they don't live within the geographical boundaries of the City of Stevens Point that they are any less part of this community. We have about 250 very dedicated city employees, some of which do not live within the geographical boundary of the City of Stevens Point. I would like them to be part of the city for financial reasons, paying taxes here, but that doesn't mean they're not spending their money here. That doesn't mean that they're not part of this community. They are involved in charitable organizations, fundraising events, or city events. I see them bringing their families to the parades. They are very much part of this community and absolutely 100% dedicated to the City of Stevens Point and those citizens and the community around us as well. So I just don't want that, these comments to be construed in any way, shape, or form that they are any less part of this community than any one of us. Chief, do you want to speak at all in regards to how many times your officers are responding from their home, wherever that home may be? Because I got to believe that's pretty rare.
It is actually fairly rare. In today's day and age of technology, cell phones, we're able to communicate much more readily to the officers, scheduling in advance, and quite frankly, when there are emergencies, whether or not we could get all of our personnel in here, minus the sleep rotation and all of that, we are reliant on the county, on Clover, on State Patrol, just as they are of our officers in times of need.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we have a motion to approve. It's been seconded. If you are in favor, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no, and the clerk will call a roll. Morrow.
Yes.
Phillips.
No.
McComb.
Yes.
Dugan.
No.
Niebone.
Yes.
Slawinski.
Yes.
Johnson.
Aye.
Oberstadt.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
Eight two, that is approved. Item number eight is on page 48 of your packet, and that's an ordinance amendment regarding traffic, section 9.05, sub G, sub I, sub K, and sub U regarding no parking, no parking during school hours, loading zones, and parking for reserved for handicapped persons. Alder Jennings.
I do have comments, and then I have questions of Director Badun. This regards, my comments regard the handicap person, or it should actually be accessible parking on Main Street. The background to this, and I did raise questions at Board of Public Works on Monday, when the pharmacy location, new pharmacy location was announced, I asked Director Badun if accessible parking could be added to help that facilitate, or help people who are picking up prescriptions at that site, and he agreed that this would be a good opportunity and said it would happen this, this summer. Therefore, I was surprised to see it on the agenda this, this month on Monday night. And while I did ask at Board of Public Works some questions, I'm not satisfied that the director has had sufficient time to evaluate this project, and I'd like to ask the director now to, if he would consider further evaluation, and if he sees a problem with the accessible parking shown to us at the Public Works meeting, because the placement of it is not making sense to me.
Director, I know you spoke a little bit about this at Public Works, but if you'd like to comment again?
As I had always mentioned, yeah, last week, I mean, trying to always get something ready in advance, we did, as I identified, you know, pick something that was otherwise relatively convenient, if it was this body's desire that we spend a little more time researching what that is and come up with maybe, you know, more of a plan to identify any future needs that, you know, we may want to plan for today as best we can, even though we don't have a crystal ball. We could definitely go back and look at that. I wouldn't be opposed in any way to doing that. This site that we've chosen will work with some modifications, however, any place that we would pickle on there would have to have some changes to it, curb ramping, et cetera, just to meet the guidelines that exist.
Thank you. Alder Jennings, are you done?
Well, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move to postpone acceptance of ordinance amendment in section 9.05 regarding parking and loading zones, specific to the Main Street, to give the director more time to evaluate this.
I'm unclear as to what your motion is. You are motioning
Let me repeat what I just said. Move to postpone acceptance of ordinance amendment in section 9.05.
Okay, because you added some other things there. I just wasn't sure if you were motioning to postpone all of it or just some of it, and it sounds like all of it. Is that correct?
Well, I would, if it's possible to postpone just the Main Street portion, that would be great, but I don't know if that's possible.
Whatever motion you would like is what you can do. Are you looking to postpone all of it, or just the segments that relate to Main Street, which would be, I believe, K and U?
Yes, and that's what I tried to say the first time, but you're being more specific, so thank you for helping me.
Right, so the motion is to postpone action on K and U. Logan, you're gonna have to help me out here. Are we splitting this because it's technically, this is one agenda item? Are we splitting the question? And we would then need a motion for consideration on section G and I?
I think the more direct way to phrase the motion would be to refer to the section numbers of the ordinance amendment rather than the sections within the ordinance itself. So for instance, you can see that the sections of the ordinance amendment are numbered with Roman numerals one through eight. So it sounds like the motion here would be to approve the ordinance amendment with the exception of section six. Is that correct?
Well, so section six is
And seven.
That's K, and that is the loading zone, which the Alder had mentioned, from First Street to, between First and Clark, and then section 15, which would be subsection U, which would be the reserved parking spot for handicapped persons on Main Street.
No.
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 Okay, so I see what you're saying. So you're talking about the Roman numeral numbers, section five for loading zones, section six for the reserved handicap parking spots.
I don't know why he's going with five.
So you would, the motion would be to postpone
Section six and seven.
I'm paraphrasing here, so correct me if I'm wrong, Logan. The motion would be to postpone action on sections five and six.
Six and seven.
Six and seven.
It would actually only be six.
Six and seven is fourth avenue.
Section seven.
Okay.
I would actually recommend
Be related to Patelli Catholic Middle School.
Okay.
I'd recommend against having a motion that contains any postponement language, because the suggestion there would be to bring it back in exactly the same form for consideration at a later date.
Let me, let me ask this then. Director, do you feel you need more time on any of this for evaluation?
I think that we could look at this at a higher level to see if this makes most sense for, in future. This site will work for a spot.
But we could add another spot at any time.
Well, I guess that's the thing that we probably didn't look at, spent a lot of time looking at, is what would it take to add yet another spot to it? It's just a single spot. The location of the access aisle may not allow itself to be combined with another handicap stall.
Hang on. I just want to be clear on the, because we have a motion on the floor. We have to get this straight. So Alder, help me out here, please. Section six, I believe, is what you are primarily talking about. That's the section on Main Street with the handicap spot kind of in the middle between Shopko and, were you talking about the handicap spot at St. Peter's Middle School too?
No.
Were you talking about the loading zone between First and Clark?
No, I wasn't.
Okay, so only, you only want to postpone action on item, or section six, is that correct?
Yes, unless I, that was my specific interest. I don't know if the director has anything to add to that, but my focus is Main Street.
Okay. So do we have a second to the motion to postpone action on item number, section six of this ordinance, seconded by Alder Person Johnson. It's getting a little confusing, but I just want to make sure everybody knows what we're doing. Alder Shore, and then Alder Oberstadt.
Thank you, Mayor. It sounded as if the, a good way to go for us would be to approve everything else.
Whatever you choose to do. I don't want to be leading anybody, but you could, you're going to have to consider everything else at some point. Right now, we have a motion to postpone one article. If that article fails, then you would be considering everything again. If that article is, or the motion to postpone that article is approved, then we would need some sort of motion to consider the rest of the ordinance changes.
Mayor, if I may.
Absolutely.
Again, if the intent is to ask Director Badun to review this and come up with a slightly modified proposal, then you do not want to approve a motion to postpone action on its current form. That would mean bringing it back in that same form later, not asking him to change it. So the best would be to have a motion to approve the parts that everyone wants to approve, and then ask Director Badun to revisit it.
Jennings, let me suggest this, because I understand you're looking to try and get a handicap accessible reserved parking spot closer to the proposed location for the pharmacy. Is that the ultimate goal here?
I want a thorough evaluation of that corridor and the best site for accessible parking on Main Street.
Okay, would that forego the existing proposal?
The image that was shown at Public Works was a specific site.
Yes.
And I think that needs to be reviewed and more time given to it. And the director
Are you against the spot where it is right now?
Yes, I am.
You are? Okay. Is there any particular reason for that?
Because if it, it's not ideal, and it may not allow for flexible, flexibility, it may not allow for expansion.
And I'm sorry, I'm not trying to put you on the spot here, but the director had reviewed this when I talked to him about getting a spot, and this spot was the quickest and easiest to put in because there was nothing there, and we had the space available to have the, what did you call it, the
The access aisle.
Access aisle, and the ramp that needs to be on there for the curb. It is, I would suggest that if the director needs more time to review that, if that, if something's going to change, then we follow Logan's advice here, and do not act at all on Article Six. Allowing the director more time to review it if he needs to, and then bring it back. So, as a suggestion
That would be fine with me, however, I've already made a motion, so now I need to retract that in some way.
Right. Well, let's do this. As a suggestion, I think I understand what the Alder Person's trying to do now. I would suggest that we, first of all, vote this motion down of postponing Article Six, and make a new motion to approve everything but Article Six, if that is your wish. Leaving Article Six out of the motion will allow the director to evaluate it, bring it back at another time, should he choose to. Does that sound reasonable? Okay, so the motion before you is to postpone action on Article Six of the ordinance amendment. Alder Oberstadt, you had a question?
No, I'm frustrated with this.
It's okay, it's just a little confusing. We'll work through it. It's not a big deal. If you are in favor of denying the motion to postpone, wait, the motion is to postpone, so you will have to vote
There's not a motion.
No, if you are opposed to postponing, and yes, if you are in favor of postponing. Is everybody clear on that?
Yes.
Clerk, actually, why don't we just do a voice vote on this one? All those in favor of postponing, say aye. All those in favor of, or opposed to postponing, say nay.
Nay.
I think that was pretty clear. Okay, now we got that all cleared up. What are your wishes? Alder Niebone?
I'll try. I would move to approve the ordinance amendment except for section six related to section 9.05 per N U of the revised municipal code.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by President Johnson. Discussion there? President Johnson?
I've been wanting to say this, and I was getting lost, which isn't unusual. I would make a strong recommendation, you know, the director is looking at this space from a functional perspective. We've got some great resources at the Aging and Disability Resource Center, who actually have a lot of background in how people with disabilities access services, and I would make a strong recommendation that he reach out to Director Petruski and ask her to provide some assistance.
Fair enough. Thank you. Alder Niebone?
I could also suggest Carolyn Peterson at Midwest Independent Living Consultants. She's been behind the move to get the logo change to make it look more like an active wheelchair motion than passive, so.
There are a lot of resources available, so the director will take all of those things into consideration.
Yeah, it's a blend of the functional infrastructure along with how people with disabilities access that infrastructure, so.
Understood. Okay, if you are in favor of this motion, you'll vote yes. If you are opposed, you'll vote no, and the clerk will call the roll. Jennings.
Aye. Excuse me, aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Oberstadt.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
McComb.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
Ten zero. Ten zero, that is adopted. Thank you for bearing with us on the sorting things out. We want to make sure we do it right.
Got it done.
On page 50, you will find item nine, which is an ordinance amendment regarding traffic, creation of section 9.14, sub seven, traffic control attendance. Alder Oberstadt.
I'd like to move approval.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Alder Person Slawinski. Discussion? Hearing none. If you are in favor, vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no, and clerk, please call the roll. Morrow.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
McComb.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Oberstadt.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
Ten zero, that is adopted. Item number 10 is on page 51 of your packet. That is a resolution creating tax incremental financing District 10, approving its project plan and establishing its boundaries. We have one speaker registered to speak, Cara, I'm sorry, two. Cara Adams. And Cara, before you get started, it was brought to my attention by President Johnson that Jerome had sent an email. Are you speaking on behalf of Jerome as well?
No. I'm speaking on myself.
Alder, do you have that email?
I can find it.
I have a copy, I have a paper copy.
Do you?
Yeah.
So what we'll do is we'll allow you your three minutes for your comments, and then we will allow you to read Jerome's letter or email, because I haven't seen it. Will that be okay?
Cool, awesome, thanks.
Available to the council?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and Cara, go ahead.
Awesome. Cara Adams, 2117 Main Street. To those who are listening, I'm coming to you tonight as a very concerned citizen. The current track of tiffs for the City of Stevens Point is at the very least disturbing and at the most fiscally irresponsible, especially for those who will be here in our far future, or for example, 27 years. There are plenty of peer reviews There are plenty of peer-reviewed academic literature explaining why TIF are fiscally poor decisions for municipalities, so I won't rattle on about that. It has been said that TIF is a municipality's only tool in Wisconsin for economic growth. TIF-driven growth is achieved by intervening and distorting local markets, for example, land and real estate markets, labor markets, and capital markets, just to name a few. I don't think that we need that in Stevens Point. Stevens Point is a great place to live. It's why me and my family call it home. We have local businesses thriving without any support through TIF. When TIF is used so freely, it's as though as our policymakers are saying that we live in a place with extreme blight, or crappy enough that it wouldn't develop on its own. As a resident, I have extreme arguments against the but-for of this TIF. When the increase in property values in a TIF don't come, what happens? How will TIF and the fiscal decisions being made now help ensure that my children will live in a community with the same benefits that I enjoy today? Voting in approval on a TIF today ties the hands of policymakers of the future. So why not try development? Why not? Because development, economic development, is hard, and it takes vision, and it takes persistence. Development is building up your people through the betterment of lives, employment opportunities, schools, and green spaces. Instead of incentives to business such as TIF, like the Lullaby Law Development that is giving $3 million in cash, over $3 million in increment financing, and selling a lot of land for a dollar to a developer in Iowa, what we have, what if we were creative and took those resources and did something totally different? Instead of building buildings, what if we use those resources to build our next generation, and while also pulling people out of poverty? What if we use those tax dollars for community development programs such as mental health, affordable housing, fiscal responsibility of our citizens, childcare, early development, early childhood development? These are just some of the ways to encourage economic development in a community that promotes prosperity and resilience. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Would you please read Jerome's email?
Absolutely.
And just for the record, state his name and address.
Got it up there, too. Dr. Jerome Segura III, 2117 Main Street. Ph.D. in Urban and Regional Economics, Commissioner Redevelopment Authority. Prior to being an independent academic, and I apologize, I have not read this more than once, I was an assistant professor of urban and regional economics at UWSP as well as their chief economist. Currently, I am a regional economist at Numbers and Nature, the founder and developer of thecentralwisconsineconomy.org, and the head gourmet chef, head gourmet mushroom farmer at Segura and Sons Mushroom Farm. I spent the last 11 years studying the regional science around state and local government finances. I have peer-reviewed scholarly academic articles published in Papers and Regional Science and the Journal of Regional Analysis and Policy. Meanwhile, I continue to serve as reviewer on the subject for scholarly articles, journals such as Growth and Change, Papers and Regional Science, Small Business Economics, and the National Tax Journal. I have too many times heard Mr. Oberstadt, excuse me, Mr. Ostrowski, Oberstadt, that was a good one, indicate nothing would have generated but-for TIF while talking about the foregone tax revenue, the increment. The science is clear: more often than not, incentives to business such as TIF fail to deliver, i.e., they do not create anything beyond what would have developed anyways. TIF is, however, shown to be subvert ways of raising tax rates while also removing public dollars from the common legislative budgetary process. To be clear, tax cuts can lead to long-run growth, but in the long run, we're all dead. In the short run, regressive tax policies such as TIF serve to drain municipal coffers, leading to tax rate hikes, funding cuts to public service, or else the budgetary situation further worsens. In response to the needless fiscal uncertainty, capital flees not only the city, but also the county, both physical and human. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Trevor Rourke.
Trevor Rourke, 601 Washington. I'm here to share my views as a resident and not representing any group. I'm not going to suggest I know a lot about TIFs, because I don't. What I do know, however, is that there have been some major projects approved to be constructed starting this summer, and some, if not all, rely on TIF. What I'm wondering is why don't we wait to see how these do first? Why wouldn't it be safer to incrementally improve our infrastructure so that these types of developers or projects come to us without incentives? These projects are relying on projected growth in Stevens Point. Larger growth than we've seen before in recent years, but what if our growth is much slower? What if it stalls? And relies less on these new buildings and more on improving infrastructure? There are a number of pain points we've been left with from overbuilding to accommodate projected growth in the past. Center Point Mall and its massive parking lots, Stanley Street's excess road width, building vacancies on 10 East, the Clark Street Bridge, perfect example, Division Street's road width and high speeds, among others. To me, this TIF represents doubling down on projected growth that's not guaranteed. Before any new TIFs are developed, I think residents should get to see the math. And the math I'm referring to is the city's expenses plus debt service plus infrastructure liability versus our tax revenue. In other words, can a stimulus to the central city, like a TIF, be effective to lower our debt ratio if we continue to build outward with sprawl? If we continue to expand outwards without watching our debt service and how future life cycles of infrastructure maintenance will increase this debt service, then we're never going to become fiscally solvent. Wouldn't it make more sense to place a moratorium on sprawl, incrementally fix our current infrastructure issues within the central city, and focus on walkability so that more people would like to stay here and/or move here to reside? The downtown is awesome already, and annual incremental infrastructure improvements are much more fiscally responsible. I think fiscal conservatives would appreciate this kind of strategy, too. Please consider taking more time to review the risks involved with TIF, and please place a moratorium on sprawl. It's long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, the speakers' list is exhausted. I want to turn the floor over to our Comptroller Treasurer, Corey Lattick, to talk a little bit about how TIFs operate in Stevens Point, and this one in particular.
Sure. So just a couple of thoughts offhand. First of all, I know that some of the Alder Persons had asked me a few months ago, does TIF really work, and are we really seeing any benefit from TIF? What I did is I looked at, over the last five years, how have TIF municipalities done versus non-TIF municipalities? So, which the TIF municipalities would be Stevens Point, Village of Plover, Village of Amherst, Village of Whiting, and Junction City. And what I found is that those five municipalities had double the growth, or double the rate of property tax base increases as municipalities that don't use TIF. So I know that sometimes there's that question of, okay, is this really doing anything? Are we really seeing those results? I would say in the city of Stevens Point, yes. We are seeing those results, and actually, out of the, I believe, 27 municipalities in Portage County, over that five-year period, Stevens Point actually, on a percentage basis, was the fastest-growing municipality. So I think that that kind of data really doesn't support this narrative that TIF is failing, or that TIF isn't needed. Couple of other things. One is, I think that, to an extent, some of these comments are well-taken and are good things to think about. I know we've talked about in the past, looking at each development agreement and thinking about those costs, and thinking about, okay, if we have to extend road network, are we going to get enough extra property tax revenue to cover the costs of maintaining that road in the long term? The thing is, that's the kind of analysis that you want to do for individual projects and individual developments, when you know exactly what that is. It's a little bit harder to do when you're just looking at creating a district, and you're looking at a broad, kind of overall, making this tool available. And then I would say the same thing as far as development agreements. Certainly, there are communities that have used TIF poorly. There have been mistakes that have certainly been made in some communities with TIF. But again, what that really comes down to is taking the necessary steps, getting some of those guarantees in place that we have been getting for these development agreements to make sure that that tax base is going to be there, and that we're using the tool wisely. And then the only other thing that I would note is, I know some people looked at the project plan and said, boy, this is, you know, there's some big numbers in here, and is this all really going to happen? And the answer is, quite frankly, we don't know. We don't know what's going to happen over the next 27 years. I can tell you that we do have one TIF district that really has not had a lot happen with it. But the, another kind of key concept here is, we shouldn't just start spending TIF money without having that property tax base growth in place. And in the district that I'm thinking of, which is in the Country Club Drive area, not a lot happened. There weren't really, there have been a few developments, but not as much as would have been projected in the project plan. So we incurred less expenses, we also have less increment, and that's okay. I think it's important to realize that a plan is just that. It's a plan of what could happen, but it doesn't mean that tomorrow we're going to go and borrow millions of dollars and start doing all kinds of things and all kinds of projects until we know that, okay, we've got the property tax base growth to support the debt service. So those are just a couple of my thoughts.
Director Ostrowski, do you have anything you want to add?
I think the key point was Corey's last statement about the project costs as well as the revenues, and making sure that we have the revenues before we start incurring those project-related costs. This is a plan, it's a guide for us to look forward to over the next 27 years. It can be amended as things change in the economy and in the future. However, it's a guide, and any individual project is still going to come back before this board to analyze, to make sure it's fiscally responsible as we move forward with it, and making sure that we have enough increment within that district to pay for it.
Thank you. Any questions for the Alders? Alder Jennings?
Director Ostrowski, I'm just wondering if you could address the question that often gets raised about, why don't you, why don't we use these resources for other things? And if you could address why that can't happen, and it's incorrect.
Sure. I mean, we often hear, why don't you spend this money on the schools? Why don't you spend this money on other staff members, or other projects related in the community? The thing with the TIF district is that those costs are paid for by the increment that's generated from these projects. So for example, the Lullaby Site, we can't just take $3 million from the city's general fund and go spending on other related projects. We're betting on that that development and the increase in tax base will generate that revenue in order to pay for that incentive. So to answer your question very clearly is, those revenues are not here yet, and that is why we need the development in order to create those revenues.
Alder Person Niebohn.
I have a question, I believe for Comptroller Treasurer Lattick, but whichever one can answer it. That when you start a tax incremental district, you set a base rate on the taxes. If property assessments go up, does that base rate also go up in line with all the other assessments? The increment would stay, but if the, if our assess rate goes up to 9.7, would that increase that base rate as well?
Laura, you want to take that one?
Sure. Okay, so one thing that's important to understand is that the tax rate in TIF districts is going to be the same as outside of TIF districts. So you're not really talking about a specific difference as far as the actual tax rate that somebody's going to pay inside a TIF district versus outside of a TIF district. But with TIF districts, what will happen is you will set the base value as far as what the current equalized value, so fair market value of those properties are, and then that revenue will continue to go to each taxing jurisdiction, so for the city general fund, the school district, the tech college, and the county. But then if the value increases, basically, it's that increase, that extra revenue that you didn't have before, that goes into the TIF district, and really, it's a cooperative effort of all four taxing jurisdictions, and actually, all four have to meet and approve it to say, okay, this extra amount of increment goes back into that TIF district. So, and again, to kind of touch on how that would work for, say, the Lullaby Site development, you provide that incentive, you have that increase in tax base from that development, that development is now paying property taxes that we didn't have before, and basically, that's what's used to repay the debt service on the $3 million. And that's another concept where, if you don't have that increase in tax base, then we really don't, you know, if we spend $3 million, we don't really have a source to pay that back.
Okay. Any other questions for Director Ostrowski? If not, we'll have him sit down. Alder Person Phillips?
Well, I guess I have a question. A young lady read a letter from a professor at the university. Is that correct, or where is he from?
He, he works in the city of Stevens Point. He is self-employed currently.
Self-employed.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Cara.
Correct, he's currently self-employed and no longer with the university.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Alder Shore.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a really important, useful, and helpful discussion for us to have, and in the discussion, I hear some things where not everybody is in agreement, and some areas where there maybe is more agreement than it seems. But, you know, in the former category, you know, I heard in the discussion that we should look at these projects as if they depend on growth to make them viable. Whereas, the way I'm looking at this, the exact opposite is true, that these projects are vitally needed for growth in the community, right? You can, you can look at the, at the question of but-for in two ways. One is that project-by-project level, and we, you know, you look at the, at the Lullaby Site, which has sat there for 11 years, and I think there's a pretty strong case to be made, that the incentive was needed for that to happen. But there's also, related to what I was just saying about needing this for growth, there's the but-for for the total growth picture in the community. And I was, I was reading something recently, probably on Strong Towns, I'm not sure, that raised a very serious question, which is, do we know of a case of a community that has had a sort of a managed growth, or even just a managed kind of stasis? And, you know, it's sort of a rhetorical question, the point of which being, the growth imperative is kind of imperative, that, you know, you really have to grow. And as we've been discussing here, it's kind of unfortunate in today's world that incentive, you know, is needed to make some of these things happen. I worry about nothing more than kind of beating the demographic odds, not having this community get older and older, replenishing the workforce with younger people, and, you know, just speaking for myself, that has everything to do with why I'm supportive of things like this. You know, when people talk about the need to take more time to consider the... You know, when people talk about the need to take more time to consider these issues, personally, I feel like nothing is as important in the decisions we make as these developer agreements. And I certainly want to say in the strongest terms I can, that we have taken a lot of time in each of these cases to think about them. So, you know, when it comes to that long-term question of infrastructure needing to be sustainable over time, that is something we think about a lot. That has everything also to do with why we're focused more on the core of the city and a little more skeptical, you know, having to do with some of that what's described as sprawl at the periphery. So, but again, this is, these are crucially important issues, and I'm glad we're talking about them. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to remind everybody, too, we're not approving any projects, just the creation of that. Each project would still have to come back to this body and several others for approval. Alder Person Dugan, and then Alder Person Marl.
I just want to thank all of us, actually, for bringing this forward with such good explanation. And as Alder Shore said, we've, you know, kind of thrashed this out for some time. And we've had such good staff input from the Comptroller Treasurer, from Director Ostrowski, from the mayor, from our lawyer, from our attorney. And I think the public right now is getting a taste of that. And I wish they could have been there at all of our different meetings, but we've, we're showing a lot of that right now. I do wish that we could have shown everybody before, but a lot of this had to be not that way. But I'm really proud of what we've done.
Thank you. Alder Person Marl, then Alder Person McComb.
I agree with Alder Shore that I am not a real big fan of TIFs, of the way that the laws are, have been imposed from the state and from the federal level as well with levy limits and so on. We've had, we've had to become more and more creative for us to keep the revenue that we need to just fund basic public services. And the way that the laws have been written, it often puts community against, against community for certain projects that we have. And there's often no other way, really, to get the funding that we need. And so, that is the reality that we are all in as we try to help our city survive and thrive.
Thank you. Alder Person McComb.
I talked with Dr. Segura, I think it was late December, because I wanted to hear what he had to say about tax incentive financing. And as I talked with him before and after, I kept an open mind. And after we spoke, I did a detailed search about tax incentive funding, and I looked specifically for sources that were academic, that were economists, including looking at an economist that Dr. Segura suggested. And I was prepared to find whatever. I found, what I found was economists saying, yeah, you've got to be careful with tax incentive funding. There's these specific things you should do to make sure that the district will make the money it's supposed to make and benefit the community. That's what I found, lots of cautions. And then, in talking with Comptroller Treasurer Lattick and Director Ostrowski, I found out that Stevens Point actually does those things.
That's right.
And I was, does those things and more. It was interesting that I found no economist in my search who was as adamantly, is as adamantly anti-TIF as our local freelance economist, and I just found that interesting. The second thing I'd like to say is, I'm stating something that was said, but I'm stating it in words that I think are more understandable. Ms. Adams asked why, why not use that money for various other things? There is not a cash somewhere of that money. I wish there were. That money is produced by the developments themselves. Lullaby Site and the parking lot where the senior apartments will go provide absolutely no revenue right now. The final thing I want to say is, one of the arguments that people do make about TIF is that it takes money away from education. Well, the Joint Review Board has a representative from the school system, the tech college, as well as the county. They don't have to sign, they don't have to agree to establish the TIF. They do so because they see the benefits that the developments will make to their institutions as well. So, that's what I have to say about TIFs.
Thank you. Think we're done with the hands now? Nope? Alder Person Phillips?
I have one question yet. I asked at the last meeting, we have a piece of undeveloped property on the west side of town that's being unused.
You're referring to Sloman Park?
To be put in the district. I don't know what it would hurt by being in the district. We might never use it in the district, but if it's in the district, we have a possibility of doing something with it? Is it in the district or not?
It is not in the proposal that you see before you.
Thank you.
Alder Nibone, and then Alder Shore.
I want to agree with something that Mr. Rourke said about urban sprawl. Now, District 7's got that empty cop site, and as much as I would love to see something out there, we've had studies that prove that our property tax revenues are really higher in the urban core. And I think this district, the boundaries, are going to continue to bolster our urban core rather than, unfortunately, bring something out to District 7. In time, that will happen, I'm sure, but I think that by focusing, like we are, on our urban core, we're putting our money where it's going to do, it's going to create the most return on our investment.
Thank you. Alder Shore?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to pick up on something that Alder Dugan alluded to that's really important, which is that indeed, a lot of our discussion of these issues does take place in closed session.
With regards to specific projects, not the creation of it. I want to be clear on that so people don't think we're doing something we shouldn't.
That's right.
And the reason is, as the state statute says, for bargaining purposes.
Yep.
That is where we are conferring within these negotiations to get the best deal for the taxpayer and make sure that these agreements are really solid. So, I just thought that was worth kind of clarifying.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think most of the Alders have spoken. Does anyone care to make a motion?
We forgot all about that.
Alder Phillips?
Move to move forward with agreement for the 10th TIF district.
To rephrase, you are moving to approve the resolution, creating tax incremental financing District 10, the project plan, and establishing its boundaries. Is that correct?
Didn't I say that?
No.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll give the second to Alder Person McComb. Do not have another speaker. I'm sorry, there was a hand in the back. Whose was that? Sir, I don't have you registered to speak.
Just a quick clarifying question, if you would, Mr. Mayor.
If the council will allow it, I will have him come to the microphone and ask his question. Does anybody have problems? Objection? Sorry. Come forward to the lectern. Name an address for the record, please.
Nathan Sandwick, 633 Portage Street. I was wondering if someone could just quick give a status update on the developer agreement with the Lullaby Site that Kara mentioned.
Actually, Nathan, we can't.
You cannot?
No, we're talking about the creation of a TIF 10, but I can talk to you after the meeting if you'd like, or you can email me tomorrow.
The, you're saying that the contents of the meeting at the May 12 meeting is not to be discussed?
We are not talking about a developers' agreement on this agenda item, merely the creation of the TIF boundaries for TIF 10. I can talk to you about it after the meeting, or you can contact me tomorrow. Thank you. Did we get a motion yet? We did. Phillips? And any other comments from the council? Hearing none, if you are in favor of the resolution, you'll vote yes. If you are opposed, you'll vote no, and the clerk will please call that roll.
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Oberstadt?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slowinski?
Aye.
Nibone?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Marl?
Aye.
10-0.
10-0, that is adopted. Item number 11 is on page 113 of your packet, and that is an ordinance amendment for officials, boards, and employees, 3.56 of the Revised Municipal Code of the City of Stevens Point for Neighborhood Associations. Alder Person Dugan?
I would move to approve this ordinance amendment for neighborhood associations. I'm a great proponent.
Great, thank you. And do we have a second? Second by Alder Person Jennings. Discussion there. Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call that roll?
Marl?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Nibone?
Aye.
Slowinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Oberstadt?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slowinski?
Aye.
Nibone?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Marl?
Aye.
10-0.
10-0, that is adopted. Item number 13 is in agreement with Portage County regarding the costs and funding for an IT upgrades requested by the county for the transfer of property tax data from the city of Stevens Point to Portage County. Page 116. Alders? Comptroller Lattick?
Sure. So, I have a memo on the back of your packet about this subject. Basically, the quick summary is that Portage County did upgrade their tax software as well as their land records software, and due to that, they've requested that we change the format of the data that we send to them. And in order to do that, it would be $5,000 for our software company to reprogram it. We've had some discussions about who should pay for that. For, some of our departments brought up that they've been made to pay for things that they've requested from the communication center, for instance. So, we didn't quite feel that it was right for the city to pay for it. What we've, our tentative agreement is basically that we would cover this in exchange for the county covering some of the IT costs that they would typically bill us back for, specifically, most likely, police and fire, when they have requests of the communication center. So, that seemed like that was the way that we could work it out in kind of an in-kind exchange. So, we would be looking for $5,000 from contingency in order to pay for that software upgrade. And then, we would, before spending that money, we would get an MOU with the county, basically stating that, you know, that they're going to give us that credit of $5,000 toward our future needs with them.
Hey, Comptroller, MOU, for those listening that may not know, is memorandum of understanding, basically an agreement. But, Comptroller, can you tell me, are we required by any law or ordinance to provide the data in a format that the county is asking us to do so in?
We are not, so...
So, we are not obligated to do this at our expense?
No, we are not obligated to do this at our expense, and we've tried to work with the county every way that we could, as far as to find them a free option. We can export it in an Excel format, but unfortunately, they just have very specific requirements with their software. And we also did try to reach out to another municipality that uses our same software system and has a county that uses the county's new software system to see if we could kind of use their program, and did spend many hours of staff time, especially Susan in my office spent many hours working on that, trying to get that to work, because we are county taxpayers, too, and ultimately, if we could have saved $5,000 for the county, you know, that's a win for all of us, but unfortunately, it just wasn't going to work.
That money, we could use on other projects.
Yes.
All right. Any questions, or Alder Person Slowinski?
I'll move to approve the agreement with Portage County regarding the cost and funding for an IT upgrade requested by the county for the transfer of property tax data from the city of Stevens Point to Portage County.
Thank you. Second by Alder Person Marl. President Johnson, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just have a question for the Comptroller Treasurer. Are the other municipalities having the same issue with their tax format, what Amherst, Plover, Junction City? Do they have to also convert their tax programs?
That, I'm not sure, but the county does collect for certain municipalities as well. So, especially for the municipalities where the county basically does everything for them as far as sends out their tax bills and then collects all the payments. I wouldn't assume that they would have any issue, but there are some municipalities where they will collect, the municipality will collect the first installment, and then the county will collect the second, and I'm not sure if they are also having the same issue.
Thank you.
Okay. Alder Shore?
Thank you, Mayor. I just thought I'd take a moment to connect the dots between this item and the item that we were discussing a little bit earlier. Clearly, we need to do these sorts of arrangements between the taxing jurisdictions, but the bigger picture is, you know, I think, sort of what we were saying earlier about increment and how the other jurisdictions are supportive of, you know, how the city captures the increment revenue from the TIDs.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. If you are in favor of the agreement, vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no, and we'll have the clerk call the roll.
Marl?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
McComb?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Nibone?
Aye.
Slowinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Oberstadt?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
10-0.
10-0, that is adopted. And I am going to step down to the lectern for our next item. I'm going to ask Director Schrader at this point to join me down here. We have your tissue paper that Mr. Kukon gave you. This is your last council meeting.
Yes, it is.
In a couple more weeks, and you're not going to be on this side of that little gate at all. I'm hoping you'll show up and sit up front and complain about it. But, I would like to present this to you on behalf of the city of Stevens Point. It says, "For his 36 years of public service to the city of Stevens Point, the residents of the city of Stevens Point extend their profound thanks, appreciation, and gratitude to the Parks, Recreation, Forestry, and Community Media Director Tom Schrader. Enjoy your retirement to the fullest as dated May 1, 2019." Tom, there is no way that any of us can thank you enough for your service, but I'll start with a piece of wood. Enjoy your retirement to the fullest as dated May 1, 2019." Tom, there is no way that any of us can thank you enough for your service, but I'll start with a piece of wood.
Thank you. One goal tonight is to get through this, so... I'm going to start with a couple quotes. You probably heard them. One was Lou Gehrig, "The luckiest man on the face of the earth. I think I'm that person too." And "Leave a place better than you found it." Those are the two things I kind of wanted to start the speech out with. I always, I got asked quite a bit by the media, "Why are you retiring?" And it's like, it was really a hard decision, because after 36 years, I still enjoy coming to work every day, even today, sitting here at 8:30 at night. I still really enjoy coming, so, believe it or not, I do. It was put in perspective, too. Somebody asked at the Convention and Visitors Bureau, "I've been on that board for 32 years." You know, "Why are you retiring?" And I said, "I think it's time to do something new." But then, as I sat there, I heard some people in the back, younger people, going, "Wow, 32 years? I'm not even that old." So it really put in perspective that maybe it is time for me to move on. So, and then I always, I always got asked, "What is your biggest accomplishment?" And I'd like to split that into two things, like what is my biggest accomplishment and what is our biggest accomplishment? I think my biggest accomplishment was the fact that the community had enough faith in me to keep me employed for 36 years. Our biggest accomplishment, I think, was, out of all the things I was able to do, was probably the Green Circle, because it touches the most people. It gets used year-round. It doesn't require anything special for anybody to do. Everybody can use it of every ability, so that was the one park thing that I was able to work on with all the other people in the community to make happen, that I truly enjoy as probably the largest accomplishment, I would say, "We did," not me. So, and speaking of the community, nothing can happen without support, and I've been fortunate enough for over 36 years to have a lot of support from the community. When I look at the mayors and the council and the park commission, the support you've given me has been fantastic. And in memory of, or in honor, I guess, of trivia, I put together a couple of trivia things here. I've worked for eight different mayors. I've worked for one mayor twice, that would be Mayor Wes Scott. So I could count that as nine, because the second time around, he had a lot more gray hair, and I didn't even recognize him. This one was hard to believe. I look back, I've worked for 71 different alderpersons.
Sorry.
And this was one, we can add tonight, would make it 397 regular council meetings I've attended. That doesn't include special. I broke it down a little bit different, you know, if they were 1.5 hours, it came out to like 600 hours, so that would be like 24 days of my life. And you know how they always say, "You can never get it back," so...
That's a perspective.
Now, I can't, I don't even want to stand here tonight and list all the organizations I worked with, because I'm going to, I'm going to leave one out. I mean, and when you look at all the organizations that make the park what it is today, I mean, it's just unbelievable. And then you have individuals and groups that show up with ideas, and let's make things happen. Sometimes it's better to just stand back and let things happen, and try not to get in the way, and things seem to happen a lot better, so I've always thought I was good at that, you know, just trying to steer people and make things happen. The last thing, it's always been said, if you surround yourself with good people, good things will happen. I thought I could do it.
It's okay, Tom.
I've had the best staff ever. I think it only turned over twice in my 36 years, so it was really easy for me to do that. The other thing... I guess I owe it a lot to my family, my Matthew and my daughter Lindsay, and especially my wife. So many times, I was taken away from them to do things, so, I mean, I really owe a lot to them, so... And they always said a good speech, I mean, you would know from communications, is to end the speech how you started. So I guess I'm the luckiest man in the world that I left the parks better than they came when I came here, so thank you.
That is a perfect example of what I talked about earlier, with service being about the greater good than any one person. Tom exemplifies that, and we're sad to see him go, excited to hear about all the adventures that he's going on, and I'm going to see if we can do something about those 24 days. Probably not going to get him back ever, but you know, maybe a belts coupon? Next up, this one's a little more personal for me, because this person took over my alder seat when I was elected mayor just about four years ago. So Heidi Oberstadt, if you could come up here, I'd like to present you with a plaque for recognition. In recognition of your dedicated public service as an alderperson on the city of Stevens Point's common council, the people of the city of Stevens Point extend their profound appreciation and sincere gratitude to Heidi Oberstadt, serving May 2015 to April 2019. Thank you very much.
On my 30th birthday, I did an interview with a local media outlet, an urgent phone interview, so she could meet a deadline. I was celebrating with my family, but I skipped my own birthday cake and did the interview in the car on the way home. I was excited to be a part of a series about women in government. One question sticks out in my mind to this day. What do we need in local government? My answer? Kindness. And I stick to that answer today. I'm sure many people will still consider me naive or too soft for elected public service. They may say that I just don't understand the inner workings of politics or the secret world of what really happens in local government. Many will say that by being elected, I knowingly signed up for people treating me cruelly, and as a result, I have no right to complain or even bring it to light. Unfortunately, my sacrifice of birthday cake was in vain, as the article never ran, but I hope that it's not too late for me to try and spread that message of kindness in government. Lately, at all levels of government, there's an overwhelming amount of hatred and loads of criticism that doesn't serve a purpose. Many local officials, including my colleagues, are serving in their positions out of a passionate desire to make our community better. Some are focusing on keeping the awesome parts of Stevens Point awesome, and some are working on improving on our weaknesses. Some are even just focusing on making sure that our city workers receive paychecks and we're able to continue offering services to our community. That gets harder every year in light of less and less funding assistance from the state. My colleagues and I are very different people, but we have much in common. We're the type of people who pool our own money to buy candy to hand out to the kids in our community parades. Those Skittles you ate at the holiday parade, those were not paid for with taxpayer money. Political communication scholars frequently refer to the term civility, and I think that asking for kindness and civility in government is a simple request. However, my hope for tonight lies less on the academic world of civility and more on the basic tenet of kindness. I believe some of our problems locally are due to a lack of kindness and a lack of perspective. I'd like to leave you all with a small dose of both. I'll try and clear up a few things about my experience in our local government and share a little of my perspective in the spirit of transparency, and I hope that it will pave a space for kindness in the future. I'll start with an introduction. Hi, I'm Heidi. Do you remember me? We met years ago before I was a councilwoman. Believe it or not, I'm still your neighbor, the one with a small and crazy dog, the one who loves kayaking and spending time on the water. Our proximity to the river is a big reason why we chose to live in District 4. My kindness, positivity, and authenticity are not a fluke. I'm really like this. My personality is certainly at odds with what most people expect from an elected official, and it was definitely a challenge in many ways. My start in public service could definitely be called a baptism by fire. In my first meeting, the infamous Reed Rochello pointed his finger at me and told me I was cold-hearted. I was shocked, and I cried the entire way home in the car. I know, I know, I'm too soft for politics. Reed didn't know me at all, and I appreciated his perspective on issues, yet he felt so strongly about my character that he wanted it said publicly and on the record. I was definitely not prepared for that. I'd seen city meetings before, and before my appointment, and I didn't remember that kind of relationship between alders and constituents. I wondered, "Did I just miss it? Were there more attacks coming? Should I be somehow preparing myself?" My first feedback in the anonymous suggestion box at City Hall was that I showed too much cleavage, and it's not dignified for an alder of our city. Of course, a photo had just run in the paper where the photographer was standing right above me, as I sat at a table signing my official paperwork. I probably would have shown cleavage in a turtleneck. I also can't believe that I just said cleavage in a city meeting and not referring to roads during the spring thaw, but that's what a swan song is for, right? After I received that message about my choice of attire, I wondered what the heck I'd gotten myself into. Is there a dress code? More importantly, does what I wear affect my ability to do this job? I hope that my ideas for the city and my passion for learning would be helpful, as I struggle to learn fast enough to do this job, and I wondered what other unwritten rules I'd unknowingly break. Believe it or not, I'm still your neighbor, the one who moved here for my undergraduate degree at UWSP and just fell in love, both with my husband and with our city. It seemed like the perfect place to raise a family and put down new roots. I want to clear up a big misconception among angry people on the internet. No one is here for the money or the glory. Money? There is no big money in this job. There are no big lobbying groups that pay us, and there aren't any kickbacks. To be honest, my take-home pay from this job is $395.39 per month. It ends up being less than minimum wage, with all the time we spend in meetings and researching and going to conferences to learn about things like TIFs and talking with our constituents. If I didn't have my husband or my kind friends to help me watch my son during meetings when possible, I would lose money with this job with the cost of daycare. Doesn't that say something about our dedication to our city? I'm aware that these positions fall under public service for a reason, but if we really want to encourage more people to get involved and increase the diversity of our representation, we should consider a raise in the salary of our public servants. Having young children shouldn't be a barrier to serving our city. Someone needs to represent the parents, too. I was too afraid of the perception to bring this up while I was still actively serving, but I hope that one of my colleagues can bring this forward in the near future. So are we in for the glory? I'm trying to remember the last time that somebody I didn't personally know said a single positive thing about our work here. I don't believe that it's not because we're doing, because we're not doing good work. Maybe it's because the public doesn't know what's going on. I didn't send out a press release when I reunited a sweet elderly woman with her lost cat, or when I helped a new family get connected with a translator to get their children registered for school, or when I threw on my muck boots and helped my constituents clean out their basement after that terrible flood a couple summers ago. We do lots of good work in our community, even if most people never see it. And we're totally fine with being out of the spotlight during our day-to-day work. I actually prefer it. Sometimes the work we're doing in government takes longer than we wish it did. I couldn't prevent that flood from my constituents, so I helped with the cleanup. In the meantime, we kept working on a solution, and this year, their road will be reconstructed. It will help with our stormwater management and help many more people in the long run. I didn't tell anybody about it. I don't know if the public connects the dots between that problem and that solution. I just wasn't concerned with tooting my own horn when that's a part of my job and there's so much more work to be done. So why do people authoritatively claim that we're terrible? Maybe it's because they assume the worst about us, so even when we do great things, they believe there's an ulterior motive. Why? Why do they think these awful things about us? I'm going to venture a guess, so bear with me. Sometimes the frustration of feeling like your voice doesn't matter manifests itself in anger or cruelty. I understand the feeling. I've driven all the way down to Madison to meet with my senator several times, yet his votes rarely reflect my concerns or my opinions, even when I bring data to back up my position. I don't take it personally, even though I'm frustrated. I know he hears me, he just believes, for whatever reason, that the right thing to do is something different than what I think it is. There's a big difference between my senator and I and our elected roles, though. Local city council positions aren't partisan. Many of our issues just aren't liberal or conservative. What kind of lawnmower should we invest in for the Parks Department? How should we prioritize our capital spending? What should the holiday trash collection schedule look like for next year? And does everyone have the garbage and recycling cans they need? Do the police and fire department have the gear they need? How about staffing? Does the treasurer and clerk, do they have enough people to serve our city the best they can? I could not tell you what the partisan stances are on most of the decisions we make, because there aren't any. This is going to be controversial, I know it. I've done plenty of research on political accountability, both before and during my time with the city. I won't go into details about models of representation, because we'd be here all night, and honestly, I'm sure most people just don't care. I can sum up the important parts as they relate to us in this room, though. I don't believe that the role of an elected official is simply to regurgitate the thoughts of their constituents. If it was, then we wouldn't need to have an election. A robot could do our job. We wouldn't need to run our campaigns on a platform of our goals for the city, because they wouldn't matter. I do believe it's important to listen, really listen, actually listen, and ask a lot of questions during the process, just so we can gather additional information about the problem. It's our job to do that, to talk to staff and experts and propose different options, even to assist in providing the logistics of those possible solutions. I often asked my neighbors when they brought up an issue what they thought a few possible solutions would be. They knew the situation better than I did at first, and I valued their ideas. It's rarely black and white, and it's our job to look for creative solutions and find an outcome that will best suit our community as a whole. It's not an easy job, but the simple act of doing it doesn't mean that we deserve such negativity. One of my favorite not-my-job tasks is encouraging everyone from the public who comes to speak at our meetings. I do my best to give them nonverbal feedback, to reassure them, and help make them feel more comfortable. I teach public speaking at UWSP. I know how hard it is for most people to come forward and speak to us, in front of us, in front of the staff, on television, on the radio. If you've been to a meeting and you've spoken with us, you probably remember me. I was the one smiling and nodding while listening to you. Many things about approaching us here can be intimidating, and I wanted to give our citizens a little bit of kindness when they were feeling anxiety. I'm not sure a robot could do that. Believe it or not, I'm still your neighbor, the one who grinds her teeth at night, sings in the shower, and loves hanging out on the back porch in the warmer months. Most of you know that my mother died unexpectedly last year when I was four months pregnant. I was so surprised with the response from my neighbors and constituents. The week following her death, one neighbor came by and used their snow blower to clear a driveway. Another dropped off a heartfelt card and a bouquet of flowers. From a few blocks over, someone arrived with a loaf of homemade bread and fresh butter. Yet another came to me and asked why I wasn't at work representing her, even though she knew the situation. And she wasn't the only one. I don't even know what to say about that. I will never forget the way those neighbors made me feel during the absolute worst time in my life. I will never forget it. It changed the way that I looked at our community. Why would people feel that it's okay to treat me this way? I would never do that to someone. Is it because I'm elected, so I deserve to be treated that way? Is it because I disagreed with them on an issue? I've thought about this over and over again, and I realized that despite all the well-intentioned warnings of my friends in elected positions, I obviously never got that hardened heart that would allow me to have these terrible comments roll right off. I always assumed that staying kind and vulnerable and truly caring about my neighbors would be an asset to me. Was I wrong? I want to pretend to be tougher than I am and act like it doesn't bother me, but having people treat me this way forever changed the way that I look at our neighborhood. Was that the goal? I completely understand questioning your elected officials and holding us accountable for our decisions. It's a key component of our government. However, I'm here to tell you that if you continue being cruel to your elected officials, you will end up with cruel people in return. Believe it or not, I'm still your neighbor, the one who loves riding her bike along the Green Circle by the river, and I really enjoy meeting new people. We've been pouring money into our new house as we convert it from a duplex back into a big, single-family home, and yes, we have all the correct permits. I know that I'll catch a lot of flak for my statement tonight. I know some people will be livid. How dare I talk about my experience this way? I deserve everything that happened, especially the bad things, because I'm a politician, right? I'm sure some members in the media will write terrible things about me, and some people in our city will be so angry that I ventured to say these things. Will there be a call for the council to be replaced by robots? Who knows? I'm honestly looking forward to a break from the constant criticism and questioning of my motives. I never took any funding from anyone for my campaigns. I don't have an agenda, other than fixing or keeping what's great and fixing what's not. I do wish that there was better communication between the city and our citizens. I've thought about this over and over again, and I realize that despite all the well-intentioned warnings of my friends in elected positions, I obviously never got that hardened heart that would allow me to have these terrible comments roll right off. I always assumed that staying kind and vulnerable and truly caring about my neighbors would be an asset to me. Was I wrong? I'm gonna pretend to be tougher than I am and act like it doesn't bother me, but having people treat me this way forever changed the way that I look at our neighborhood. Was that the goal? I completely understand questioning your elected officials and holding us accountable for our decisions. It's a, it's a key component of our government. However, I'm here to tell you that if you continue being cruel to your elected officials, you will end up with cruel people in return. Believe it or not, I'm still your neighbor, the one who loves riding her bike along the Green Circle by the river, and I really enjoy meeting new people. We've been pouring money into our new house as we convert it from a duplex back into a big, single-family home, and yes, we have all the correct permits. I know that I'll catch a lot of flack for my statement tonight. I know some people will be livid. How dare I talk about my experience this way? I deserve everything that happened, especially the bad things, because I'm a politician, right? I'm sure some members in the media will write terrible things about me, and some people in our city will be so angry that I ventured to say these things. Will there be a call for the council to be replaced by robots? Who knows? I'm honestly looking forward to a break from the constant criticism and questioning of my motives. I never took any funding from anyone for my campaigns. I don't have an agenda, other than fixing or keeping what's great and fixing what's not. I do wish that there was better communication between the city and our citizens, but that's due to my background and a little insight from the inside of City Hall. I think many local governments could use some help from a communication professional. We are certainly not the only one. Maybe we could add that to the budget in the future years. Believe it or not, I'm still your neighbor, the one with a hard-working, mustachioed husband and the sick baby, the one who loves to bake and share her treats with everyone. I'm proud of my honesty in deciding, deciding to resign to take care of my son and being very transparent about what's going on. I thought it would be better to explain what was happening in my life, admit that I'm actually not Superwoman, and allow someone else to devote their time and energy to serving our community, while I devote my time and energy to helping my son grow up healthy and strong. Of course, while most people were supportive, there were others who questioned my timing, the real reason I'm leaving, and whatnot. There was even a constituent at a meeting who was so angry with me, she responded by making scary faces at my son and made him cry. Really? Come on. I hope this statement doesn't sound like I'm just here to complain. Rather, I truly feel that it is the time to ask for kindness and empathy among our community. Please treat my replacement with kindness. Please treat my colleagues with kindness. And above all, please treat each other with kindness. We all want the same things, a happy, healthy, thriving, safe community that serves people of all ages. We are all in this together. Dear council members and staff, I thank you with all my heart for the opportunities I've had to work with you. I'm so proud of what we've accomplished together, and I look forward to seeing what you all do next. I appreciate your patience as I learn the complexities of issues that most people outside of City Hall may never even consider. Thank you so much for helping me celebrate our alderbaby and being as helpful as possible with Teddy once he arrived. Please continue to help the new council members, as we all know the learning curve is steep and we were all new once. Dear citizens of Stevens Point, thank you for allowing me to serve you for the past four years. While it had many challenges, I don't regret it for a second. Perhaps since my son is a little older, I'll be able to afford to come back for a term or two. I still care about you and I'll still fight for you, but it just won't be on the public record anymore. Believe it or not, I'm still your neighbor, so I'll see you around.
Heidi, regardless of what other people may think, or what even you may think, you are one of the alders that gets it, and I don't think anybody here could've said that any better. I'd like your permission to cut that out and post it up on the city website, because I think more people need to hear that.
Okay, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And next up, Alderperson Mary McComb. In recognition of your dedicated public service as an alderperson on the Stevens Point Common Council, the people of the City of Stevens Point extend their profound appreciation and sincere gratitude to Mary McComb, serving April 2015 through April 2019.
It's been a good run. I ran for city council to contribute to the betterment of my hometown, and I have done exactly that. I thank the residents in District 9 and throughout the Point area who supported me and appreciated what I brought to the role of alder. From 2015 until now, I have advocated for friendly, attractive neighborhoods, infill development, sustainability, and transportation justice, and for my District 9 constituents. I have spoken honestly. I have not pandered to anyone. An alder is not a parrot who merely echoes the most insistent voices. Truth does not necessarily belong to those who shout the loudest, and it certainly does not belong to those who insult their elected officials with ugly, mean, personal comments. I'm gonna echo Heidi. I wasn't gonna say this, because I, I wasn't gonna say it, but I'm gonna say it. I started this position because I loved my hometown. I leave it, loving my hometown, less, not because I lost an election, but because of the trolling that has taken place online. I could not and cannot believe this is my hometown. It is the council's responsibility to make the best possible decisions for the good of all, not only listening to constituents and each other, but also considering research data and expert testimony. I want to make a shout-out here to our incredible city employees. They knock my socks off with their outstanding capabilities and dedication. And a special shout-out to the Streets Department. I love the Streets Department. Good governance is a collaborative effort among council colleagues, other elected persons, residents, and staff. Together, we have set forward-thinking policies for Stevens Point, and I am very proud of my part in this. I will miss everyone and carry on the good work.
Thank you all for your service. Tomorrow, we'll have a few swearing-in ceremonies for a new alder, the reelection of the clerk, the reelection of the mayor, and we're gonna keep doing what we've been doing. I hope everyone stays involved, especially Tom, when we have a dedication of the new Schrader Connection on Saturday, this coming Saturday, at 10:00 a.m., to dedicate the Schrader Connection, so everybody is invited to that as well. Item number 15 is to adjourn and to close session. It looks like about 9 o'clock. To pursue it, to Wisconsin Statute 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E for deliberating or negotiating purchasing of public property, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session for the following. One, two, two proposed developments in TIF District 5, a proposed development in TIF District 6, and a potential property, properties in regards to tax incremental financing District 10. I need a motion to go into closed session. Moved by Phillips, seconded by Johnson. Discussion? Clerk, would you please call that roll?
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Oberstadt.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
McComb.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Morel.
Aye.
Ten zero.
Ten zero. Thank you, Representative Shanklin, for attending our meeting.